Welcome tonight, Monroe City Council. This is a regular business meeting for Tuesday, February 11th, 2025. The time right now is 7:00 PM. Going to ask that our clerk this evening, Simonson, Liam. Okay. Liam McCorkle, please call the roll. Thank you.
Council members present and establishing a quorum. Councilmember Fulcher, councilmember Beaumont, councilmember Hanford, councilmember Gamble, councilmember Scarborough, councilmember Walker.
Thank you. And we did hear at a meeting earlier that councilmember, I was going to say councilmember Kyle. Councilmember Fisher would not be here this evening, so unless there's objection, we'll consider his absence as excused. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Beaumont, will you please lead us? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. There's a time set aside for people to come forward to talk to the council about any topic related to the city of Monroe. A total of three minutes is afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, and nobody signed up? All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That would be the consent agenda. And I turn to the council. Insert Jeopardy music here. Councilmember Scarborough. I, okay, sounds good. Could use more coffee. I'll complete the end of that sentence. So I have a motion from councilmember Scarborough, a second from councilmember Fulcher, to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is councilmember reports. And we'll go ahead and start off with councilmember Hanford. Okay. Do we want to know why? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fisher is not here. Councilmember Walker, you two look like you're closer together than you should be. And I'm looking. All right, councilmember Fisher, Walker.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see everybody after that break last week. I just wanted to talk real briefly about something that's going on downtown, which is the removal of the awning at 120 East Main Street, which is the Papa's Building and the Tijuana's. So we put a post out on our Historic Monroe Facebook page and just said, gosh, you know, did a little research on the building and kind of put a picture out of what it looked like back in 1932 and in the 40s and 50s when there were other businesses in there. And we've had like over 200 people weigh in and say, we love this brick. It looks wonderful. We hope they don't put an awning back. And it was just a reminder to me that people really, really care about historic downtown and how it looks and about our old buildings. And it just really made me feel great. And people really got involved. And right away, we're saying, gosh, that looks great. And, you know, what was in there? And, you know, it was, I think, I think Xtapa was there, the first location of Xtapa in the 80s. But it's just been a lot of fun digging around and finding out the history of that building. And it's just a wonderful reminder that people care. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fulcher.
Thank you. I love that. I love old Monroe stuff, so good report. I was at the Chamber luncheon today and enjoyed a very good informational talk from Katie Woods, our beloved Katie Woods, on time management. That was awesome. But other than that, I was trying to think if there's one specific thing I need to report on and just, I just can say as a constituent of the city, I do appreciate the quick response from our Public Works Department this week to my complaint last week. So thank you very much, Jacob. That's all. Bye.
Thank you, councilmember Scarborough.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Gamble. All right, thank you. All right, turning to staff, we have the Economic Development Report for November, December 2024 to January 2025 with Patrick Doherty, who if not is online, is not online. Is that you? Oh, okay. Yep, I see him. Hey, Patrick. Patrick?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, for, so a report from November, December. Go ahead.
Yes, well, the report is in your agenda bill. And I'd be happy to raise any highlights from it or just wait to see if you have any questions about it.
All right, we'll turn to the council. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? The report's in the packet. All right, thank you very much, Patrick. If we have any questions, the councilmembers will go ahead and email me and the administrator will send those forward. Thank you again.
And I have the next item, too.
Okay. Excellent. So this would be item 7.2, Presentation of 2024 Economic Development Annual Report. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And greetings, councilmembers. So first, before I walk, I'm just going to walk through it quickly because, of course, you have it. And it's probably more for those folks who may be watching online at home about what we do. But I want to give a preamble about why we do this Economic Development Annual Report. And there's several reasons. One is it's a good tool for us at the city government to understand the pulse of the economic vitality of our community. It can help inform decisions that we may be making during the year regarding rules, regulations, incentives, other things in place to support economically vital community. It also is a snapshot of the demographics and statistics about our community that we can share with inquiring parties. They may be companies that are interested in Monroe or developers or people purchasing property or investing in our community. And of course, it also serves as a tool to communicate to the public about, again, our economic vitality and some of the programs and things that we do to support our economic engine in Monroe. So I'll just kind of walk through quickly, but certainly let me know along the way if you want me to stop and, and address something in greater detail if that's okay. So I think that we'll just go page by page quickly. And I think Jody or whomever there, other than the contents page, we don't need that. We have a lovely message from the mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor Thomas, for another good message that really, this year, highlights particularly the, all the work that the community and staff and council did in completing our comprehensive plan, which of course includes an economic development element. So that was kind of the highlight of the message there. And so thank you very much for that. Moving along. And then the economic development is kind of encapsulated here on this page. And obviously, you know that better than I do, having worked through all the economic development. But just towards the bottom of that page, I just provide a highlight to the community about the economic development goals, policies, and action items. So that's basically the headings that are the goals, policies, and action items in the economic development element of the comprehensive plan. I'm certainly not going to read them, but they're there for people to see the highlights of what we're focusing on. So the next page, please. And of course, we want to showcase our Economic Development Advisory Board, wonderful group of civic and business leaders in our community, seven positions filled fully, which is great. Last year, when I reported, we didn't, we had a missing, we had an open position. So it was nice to have a full board. And here's, of course, their information, what they represent and what subcommittees they are members of. And of course, we also offer at the bottom of the page that, you know, people who might be interested in serving in the future when there's openings, encouraging them to get in contact with us and apply if they're interested. And then we go down to, it's always important to recognize that economic development is the product of a network of players. And here's the players that we are in a network with, everything from the state, county, our regional partners. And so it's important to recognize that, of course, the Monroe Chamber as well. So thanks to all of our partners. One of the key things about economic development is business recruitment, retention, and expansion. They all have a different set of strategies. And I'm not going to read those here. You've seen these before, but it's important to communicate to the public and to inquiring parties that we do have these strategies in our sights. And these are things we focus on in economic development. So this page kind of just details that. And so we'll probably skip to the next page then. And I think that, so then, this is just the cover page for the next couple pages, which are about our demographics. And so, of course, I share our population continuing to grow. There's a breakdown of the race and ethnicity of our community, our average income. We've got our workforce, educational attainment, which is, there's a little, I'll read the little blurb at the bottom of that, that's saying Monroe's 2024 workforce was just slightly below the 2023 figure, but women had shown an increase as a percentage of the workforce. And as well, the college graduate percentage, excuse me, had increased. So that's great. And let's see, let's go to the next page, I think. Here is a breakdown just of the, the kinds of jobs that people are in, in our workforce. You can see the breakdown, management, business science, sales office, service, natural resources construction, and transportation production. Also, it's interesting to see the employment. So here you can see the unemployment rates. We don't get unemployment information at the city level anymore. We used to get that from the state. They only do it at the county level. So you will see in the, on the figure on the left, you'll see unemployment for the country, the state, Seattle Metro area, King County, Snohomish County. So Snohomish County is about 4%, which is exactly the national average. And so we're definitely, you know, right in line with, with a somewhat really healthy number. 4% is considered a healthy number for employment. And then there's the weekly, average weekly wages in the figure on the right. And you can see that Snohomish is obviously less than King, but higher than Pierce. So, and we're held up a lot by the aerospace-related employment in our county. Okay, the next page. This is a breakdown of the housing size. You'll see we have a lot of housing that's in the two or more, two or more person households are the orange, which is the largest single figure. But next, after that, is the four or more person household. So we do have some larger households. Our housing market is quite competitive. I think those of you who've seen that there's a scarcity of homes on the market and those that are on the market, at the beginning of this year, averaged only 25 days on the market, had at least two above-price offers. You can see the median home sales price compared to the county median, just slightly lower than the county median. And you can see the median rent for apartments, $24.50, which is kind of in the middle of the range of those comparator cities you can see there. Also, the commercial vacancy rates, retail, we are at a historic low vacancy rate, meaning that we can support more retail in our community, believe it or not. We've only got a 1.2% retail vacancy rate, which is 20-year low. Office is low for the region. It's, it's in line with other suburban locations, but obviously, as you know, some of the central cities have much higher office vacancy rates. And our industrial is right in line with the Puget Sound average. Here on the left, you see the building permits. And you can see the single family. We had a spike way back in, before the pandemic in 2018. Obviously came quite a bit down. And we're still kind of in line in the up and down year of the years after the pandemic. But multifamily is the one that's showing a bit of a climb from the previous two or three years. Next page. And business license activities. So we have 1,376 active business licenses. These are Monroe businesses. So there's actually over 2,000 business licenses, but a lot of those businesses are from, you know, outside the city that do business in Monroe. But Monroe-based businesses is 1,376. 836 of those are home-based, so that's a very interesting number. It tells us there's the potential for growth in some of those businesses to move into brick and mortar. And then 516 brick and mortar businesses. And then sales tax collection, we see that there. We came in, as you all know, a little bit lower in 2024 than we hoped, but we're cautiously optimistic that the economy will, you know, be strong this year and that we'll be able to see a little bit of a return to what we've budgeted for. Lodging tax is showing really good growth, which is great. We're ahead in 2024. And obviously, that represents the tourism sector of our economy. And obviously, tourism sector also, you know, percolates into the other parts of the economy. So it's, it's nice to see a healthy growth in the lodging tax revenue. Okay, next, I think we move into the business survey. So as you know, we do a survey of our businesses every year. It's part of this annual report. And I'm probably not going to read all the answers that we got, but we had, these top, you can see there's four highlighted responses there. And this is kind of like the major takeaways from the survey, that the vast majority of businesses remain optimistic about their revenue projections for this year. They will either keep their staffing at current levels or could, could make, could consider increasing them this year. They are, of course, concerned about rising prices, as it worked the last couple of years, and the cost of doing business. And it was heartening to see that the vast majority of responding businesses expect to remain in business and in Monroe in business within the next three to five years. So that was good to see. And I don't know that you probably want me to go through every question of the survey. You can see that in the following pages, but I will skip to the final page of the survey portion here. This is the detailed survey stuff, and you can read that probably on your own. The highlights were what I just mentioned a moment ago. But here are the open-ended responses. I thought we'd just quickly touch on those. And so these are when we ask people what other comments they might have than the structured ones we offered. The most frequently offered kinds of comments were, you know, that they're, they're still concerned about crime, homelessness, illegal activities. People want to improve and enhance historic Main Street area, encouraging more active businesses, promote small businesses throughout Monroe, allow more signage for businesses and for community wayfinding, address traffic choke points, provide permitting assistance, create more activities and events downtown, and offer face-to-face meetings with city staff. Other issues offered, touched on, increasing costs, rent, materials, et cetera, concerns about economic stability. Interesting, one person asked, could the city partner with the school district to build an indoor sports facility? And lastly, we had a couple of comments about making sure that we promote and enhance all the business districts in the city, not just to focus in one area. And then the last few pages are about resources for small businesses and how to subscribe to the newsletter. So I think that's a summary. Certainly, if you have questions, let me know. Actually, one last thing I'll say before signing off and handing it back to you, Mayor, is as we go through this year, and I look ahead to preparing next year's report, there's no particular perfect science about this combination of information and materials. If people have, councilmembers or others have desires or wishes to see other things addressed in the annual report, please let me know, and we can certainly retool it along the way. And with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate the report. Councilmembers, do you have any questions or at this time? Councilmember Beaumont, go ahead.
Thank you. Patrick, I just wanted to compliment you on this report. It's really well laid out. It's colorful. Of course, my favorite page is page 18 with our museum sign. But I love the fact that you've got local businesses and, you know, big pictures of them. It, it's really nicely done, really eye-catching and beautiful. And it really gives a sense of some of the businesses we have here in town. And it doesn't have to be this way. You could have just, you know, put charts on a piece of paper and, you know, whoever laid this out and came up with the concept did a beautiful job. Thank you.
Well, we definitely want to share those things with our communications and graphics team that helped me as well. So thank you. I'll pass that along.
All right. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to the, to the next item on the agenda. That would be the Parks Department, January 2025 report with Mr. Farrell. Mr. Swant? Yes. You need a beard now. I don't know, clap twice. Alexa, turn on the microphone. Hey, Siri, sorry.
Great, thank you. So just to briefly cover a few things in the, that are in the report and then a couple that are, that are not. So within the report, I mentioned this a little bit last month, but you saw a ton of pruning taking place along 203 and then also on Turney Place. And that was a lot of line-of-sight stuff that was, that was in the way that we'd wanted to get to for months and months and months and finally were able to. And so if you haven't been out there, it looks really nice. Hillcrest Park, we started our pilot project. And so what we're doing is on that one, trying to use mulch as opposed to weed killer in those areas. And we're calling it a pilot project because what we want to do is take the data as far as time it took staff to do the mulching and pulling those into place as opposed to the weed killer and get kind of a estimate of overall cost of doing that. One kind of benefit to that is that we don't have to haul the leaves and, and things off-site. We can leave them on-site. The downside to it is it looks a little scrubbier than having a nice clean bed. And so it gets all pushed back into there. So staff's going to continue with that throughout the year and see, see how that works out. Just on a note with not using the herbicides, this has been a question the public's asked us quite a bit about not using herbicides. We cannot get away from using herbicides. We just can't. And that's specifically the Bohemian knotweed that invades our city, especially along our shorelines. That can only be killed with an aquatic-based plant killer. And so, so that's a question we get a lot from the public, and the answer is, we just can't. We, we can't avoid that. And so I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Councilmember Gamble?
It's, it's, it's actually three layers. So we have the mulch that's going in that we didn't put down like a traditional weed barrier fabric down there. And so what we did is we piled layer on layer on layer of mulch in there. And we're going to see how it works. I mean, maybe it won't. That's why we call it a pilot project. And, and see how it works and, and take it through the, essentially, the entire year. And then at the end of the year, the two people that we have, that were tasked doing it and that are excited about doing it, will type a report for the Parks Supervisor, myself, to review and just look at how many hours. Because it is a question we also get from the public is, why aren't you using this methodology as far as maintaining the parks? And there are, like I said, downsides to it as far as aesthetics. Some people don't like all of that in the beds. They like nice, clean bed areas. They, they think it makes, it looks for a neater park. And some people, some people are for it. My question to staff, a couple of staff members actually brought this project to us and said, hey, we want to try this out. And, and my question was that is, how much time is this going to take us in addition, you know, beyond what it would normally take us? And so that's, that's what, one of the big factors for looking at is the bottom line on time. As you know, we don't have a lot of it.
Right. Now, I appreciate it. I, I actually be interested because I've never been able to find a, just a pure mulch solution myself. We always had to use a barrier if we were, if it was just going to use mulch.
Yeah.
Just because of our climate and the wet and all that, that always grows through. And then you end up right back to where you were at the beginning, which is maintaining the weeds that grow through. So be interested to see what you find out without a weed barrier.
Yeah. And it's, from what my understanding is, it's a pretty thick layer of mulch that they, they put down there. And so that's also going to be part of the documentation process is how much mulch did we put down in order to suppress the weeds? Did it suppress them? My guess is you're going to have things like horse tail that come up through there and, and other things, but. Buttercup. And so, but giving it a shot and, and seeing how it is. And so we can say that we, we took a look at it and maybe we get some lessons learned that we, you know, put forward in the future if we don't adopt everything. So.
Cool.
Should be interesting.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Just one last thing is we have had reports of dead waterfowl at Lake Ty. We had the Parks Crew out there and take a look. They found a total of three of them. They weren't, it was not like they had all died recently. Some of them, it looked like it had been about a month ago. And so based on what we found in, in consultation with Department of Fish and Wildlife, they don't believe that it's bird flu. They think it's just waterfowl that are dying. And, and then even our staff, you know, observing the waterfowl, you will see them swimming in circles. You'll see them acting almost drunk as, when they're walking around when they have bird flu. And we haven't observed any of that out there. So, so we're staying in contact with Fish and Wildlife and, and if anything comes up, you'll know.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Ben. Next item then is the Mayor Administrator Report, 8.1, City Administrator Report Extended Agenda, Administrator Knight.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Looking forward on the extended agenda for Tuesday, the 18th, both the Finance and Human Services Committee meeting and the regular study session have been canceled because we will be having a quorum of councilmembers traveling to Olympia for the Association of Washington City's Legislative Days. For the regular council meeting on Tuesday, the 25th, we will have a P3 committee meeting, that's Transportation Planning, Parks and Recreation, and Public Works. So there will be new business, accessory dwelling unit code amendments. There'll be an introduction by Amy Bright. And then accessory dwelling unit impact fees and utility connection fees. And that'll be presented by both Jacob Roberts and Mike Farrell. For the regular council meeting, starting at 7:00 PM, we have a number of consent agenda items. Those include the accounts payable, the 2025 work plans for our boards and commissions and for our council committees, a contract with Azevar to do a revenue audit, and then first responder flex funds with Chief Jolly. Under new business, we have transportation impact fee update with Scott Peterson and Jacob Roberts, park impact fee update with Ben Swanson, board and commission appointments from Liam McCorkle, and then department reports.
All right, thank you. Any questions about the extended agenda? All right, thank you. Administrator Knight, then, to the City Administrator Report.
Great, I have a couple of cause for applause, so congratulations. We did get quite a bit of social media coverage and kudos to our Public Works, Parks, and Police field staff for the work that they did during the snow events that we had last week. They just kept coming every day. It seemed like there was a new, new little bit of snowfall, but it was great to see our team out there. They have to work really closely together because we have to make the call early in the morning when the roads won't be passable. And then the police have to call out Public Works and Parks then to respond to those events. The, also want to give a kudos to our Building Department, John Harper. He earned his commercial building safety inspector certification. That is not an easy test to pass, and he really has been doing a lot of work in order to prepare and pass that test. So kudos to him. That just brings, again, another level of certification and ability for our internal team. And then just a reminder that we are setting up the meetings with our federal delegation and officials, and that is scheduled for Sunday, April 27th through Wednesday, the 30th. And if you haven't, if you're interested but haven't yet notified Liam McCorkle, if you want to attend that, if you could reach out to him, that would be very helpful as we begin making those kind of final registration efforts. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda then is 8.3, Mayor's Report. Couple of things to report on. One, you'll find a proclamation for Black History Month in your packets. Two, the travel to Olympia for me to meet with our representatives was canceled. Hashtag snow, hashtag slippery. And the, the other thing I had mentioned previously was that I was going to meet with the Freyland's Elementary School, a Freyland's Elementary School class. It was Ms., Mrs. Robin Carlson's class, fourth and fifth graders. I, when just double checking the email, they signed their name on the email, the skate park teams of room 22. Both Ben Swanson and I sat through about 30 minutes of presentation with approximately six different groups of fourth and fifth graders. They all did a really great job of supporting the need for a second skate park here in Monroe. The presentations have been sent to Ben. Ben will be forwarding those to you over the next couple of days. I had intended to make certain you have them today, and unfortunately, you know, we had other, we had other things going on, so you didn't receive them. But you'll get a copy of those presentations here soon. I will say that first, that they identified the skate park should go in the stormwater detention pond that is on the south side of Turney, just south of Walmart. So right there at the corner. They felt that that would be a really good location because it's already got bumps in it. And so you could just put concrete over the bumps. And that the cost of the project, they, they did a really good job of advocating would be somewhere between, was it $25? Yeah, $25 and about $75,000. Did somebody say $100,000? Did we break a three, a six-digit number? Oh, that's right. Yes, I questioned them and they upped it to $100,000. So somewhere for $25 and $75,000, we, we can do a skate park. So the class did a really great job. They had really great presentation materials. Somebody had a three-dimensional, you know, sort of diorama. And there were a number of, I, I didn't realize it, but there are a lot of cats who can skateboard. And I saw pictures, cats. Yep, you heard me. Cat, cats, meow, that, that kind of. Lots of pictures of cats skateboarding. So, and I, there was even one dog skateboarding, and it was a big wrinkly dog, you know, real cute, tongue hanging out, and it was, it was awesome. So you're going to make a motion to put a skate park right there, aren't you, sir? Go ahead, Councilmember Scarborough.
Where do they propose that we should put this?
In the stormwater detention pond on the south side of Turney, at the corner of Turney and.
Chain Lake?
Yeah, Chain Lake, sorry. Yes.
Where will people park?
They would, they would park at Walmart, and they would use the restrooms at Walmart. Sorry. Yeah, yeah. It was, it was, it was, it was very well thought out. They, they went so far as to find a piece of property that the city owned, that they thought through where people could park. They thought through where the restrooms were. They thought through the cost. I did have to explain to them what a stormwater vault was. So I said, we, this is a stormwater pond. And when I explained that it was a stormwater pond, the kids, because I'd also asked them what kind of materials they thought, because, you know, there's wood, and then there's concrete, there's other materials. And they all agreed concrete was a really great idea. And then some of them agreed that concrete, but maybe some wood ones also because of different abilities and because the materials make different sounds. So maybe it's good having different sounds. And once I explained that it was a stormwater pond, which meant during the winter, the water goes through there, they recommended backing off the wood material because it gets moldy. And so they did a really good job of keeping me on point. But I had to explain that a stormwater vault is like a big room where the water goes, and then we'd put a, you know, we'd put the skate park on top of it. And again, they reiterated, but the, you know, the bumps are already there to put the concrete over it. So when we were done, we went ahead and explained how we have community meetings. So we talked a little bit about opportunities to come and give presentations to the council. They did keep all their presentations to three minutes each, which was pretty cool. They understand that if they're to come before the council to give a presentation that they have their three minutes. So we did talk a little bit about civics and about how to, how to have an impact with the council. And then, like I said, we talked about, you know, there are community outreach opportunities. We talked a little bit about the park on the north side of Highway 2 that is up, you all know where it is. And we also talked about the, the festival lot that we just purchased in the downtown. So there were two things that we talked about where they could come and, and learn more about those particular projects and potentially give input in the next few or several months. I went ahead and had Mrs. Carlson talk to, to Ben, get his email address so that Ben could go ahead and send links to these projects online so that, again, the class could continue doing some work on that if they wanted to. So anyway, it was a really great presentation, and, yeah. Ben, did you want to add anything about that? You want to know who the contractor is for $25, and you, you want to know where we find these cats, right? Yeah, they were talking about coming, no, not the cats, the kid, the, the kids. Yeah, so, so Mrs. Carlson might, might come to, and might have a couple of the, the kids come and present, and, you know, we'll, we'll let them know to keep to their three minutes and, and do their presentation and everything like that, so. Yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Let me, everything, okay. So everything that I said about Walmart, replace Walmart with the word Lowe's. Yes, they said. I'm so sorry. When you, when you said that was a long way, it didn't. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's the coffee thing. So, yeah, no, no, it was Lowe's.